They're waiting.
Why?
Everybody have a nice Thanksgiving? We have some small talk.
You guys want us to start? Why don't we call this work session to an order? Sorry for the delay, we had a good presentation by Rob Strattling on optical scanners, so hence the delay. But, all right, why don't we, why does the council turn to page four? We'll call up Chief Price and we'll do Bill seventy dash seventeen on page four. And good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon, members of council. I did have a good Thanksgiving. Calvert Hall won, so it wasn't that good of a morning. So, so what we are requesting is, it's a federal emergency management or FEMA grant on behalf of the Department of Homeland Security's awarded Baltimore County Office of Emergency Management, two hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars in funding under fiscal year twenty seventeen, emergency management preparedness grant. These funds are used to increase the county's ability to plan for, respond to, mitigate, and recover from disasters and emergencies. The grant is administered by Maryland Emergency Management Agency, who manages and disperses these funds to the individual localities. This particular grant is targeted to be used for tablet computers, mounting hardware, installation costs, and cellular service to all fire EMS apparatus in Baltimore County, including the volunteers. We have an agreement in place to support cellular service in fiscal year nineteen with the same grant during the next performance period. This will provide turn-by-turn direction to assisting and responding to emergencies as well. It's our intent to add future layers of GIS technology to enable the responding apparatus to know things like water, water main sizes for larger-type incidents, location of hydrants, those sorts of things. The grant will also be providing funding for emergency notification system upgrades, and that's the reverse nine-one-one system, as well as hazardous material monitoring equipment for our hazardous materials unit. OIT is aware and supports the first two projects and will not be impacted by the third. There is no direct cost match associated with this grant. EMPG does require a one-hundred percent match in emergency management investment within the jurisdiction, but this is done using existing expenses. Baltimore County uses the cost associated with our Verizon and the alley services to cover the match, and that's within dispatch. That's how when someone calls via Verizon that we can pinpoint their locale. The emergency notification system costs have historically been sustained by federal funds, and as far as for ongoing or future encumbrances, there may be a future encumbrance to the county in the form of cellular service and application subscription beginning in fiscal year twenty to sustain the tablet project. And the rough numbers now, today, the estimates are seventy thousand for cellular and seventy-five hundred for the application.
Any questions or comments from the council? So you said in fiscal year twenty, there's a possible?
Yes.
That would continue each fiscal year going forward?
Yes, and then, and then, and then moving forward. And this is technology that, that we have been looking at and looking for, for a long time. This has evolved. We felt now was the opportune time to do this. This technology, when it first really came onto the market three to five years ago, just had to work through its paces. There were some, there were a lot of hiccups associated with this, but we feel that the, you know, this product that we're purchasing now will greatly benefit our first responders, allow us to get to a location a lot quicker. And again, it's all encompassing, you know, career and volunteers will benefit from this, every citizen will benefit from this.
Any other, Councilman Crandall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, just wanted to thank you for your work in helping the new Station Fifty-One Volunteer Fire Company in Essex get merged and started. I know that it was quite a process that's been undertaken for a number of years now and finally came to fruition, and we had the honor of attending the ceremonies. So Rockaway Beach, Hyde Park, and Middleborough all merged into one volunteer station to serve the citizens of Essex in Baltimore County. So, thanks for your work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Crandall.
Great, excellent, well, thank you, thank you, Chief, appreciate you coming in.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
And then, how about the county council will turn to page fourteen? We'll call up Mr. Will Anderson, Director of Department of Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution one oh nine dash seventeen, and page fourteen. Good afternoon, Mr. Anderson.
Again?
Again.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Resolution one oh nine seventeen is a resolution that identifies a development area, specifically the Sparrows Point Development District. And this is at the request of Trade Point Atlantic, the developer of the peninsula, that has asked us to establish this geographic area. That's what this resolution does. And it's established by state law. It's established in a contiguous area in a sustainable community, which we have at Sparrows Point. And it lays out the physical boundaries that are in the attachment here of the, I think it's exhibit two, of the documents that you have in front of you. And under this resolution, there is no obligation to do any financing, there is no tax benefit, there, there's no financing, there's no bonds. This resolution is simply to lay out a boundary, and the reason that the developer has asked us to do this now, under state law, if you establish a geographic boundary, it lays out both the physical boundaries and it puts a timestamp on what's the property worth. By doing it now, they establish their base value back in twenty sixteen, which is how the state economic development law allows this district to be established.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Anderson? Councilman Crandall?
Sure. Mr. Anderson, just to verify once again, this is just a preliminary step. There's no obligation to do tax increment financing or, or anything quite yet, and we're in fact probably months and months away
That's correct.
From that point.
That's correct. This resolution is really just to set up the boundaries of the geographic area.
And I have a question for the, the attorneys. In establishing a district, aside from the, establishing the TIF district, by establishing the Sparrows Point Development District, does that then give the legislative branch the ability to legislate certain things inside of the district? For instance, if we all got mad at Trade Point and we said, okay, the only thing that you can do there are horse farms, we could use this district as a, as a means to do something like that. Is that accurate, Mr. Field, Mr. Boswick?
Two lawyers that don't want to say a word.
I didn't see you guys jump, jump on that one.
Of the many things I thought about before I saw this, I have to admit that wasn't one.
I'm not attempting to turn the major redevelopment effort into a horse farm, but...
Just for the record.
I, I mean, I don't think that it prohibits you from doing that, but, I mean, I'd, I'd have to go back and look at the sections again.
Okay.
I was looking at it for other purposes.
Very good.
Other questions or comments from the council on this, establishing this district? All righty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, obviously, we've been talking about this, council and with Mr. Anderson, and we do appreciate your help in answering a lot of our questions as well.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and I would, I would say, and this was verified by the administration, that there, there's a lot of analysis and numbers crunching that's going to have to go into this before the administration makes a recommendation to the council, is that correct?
That's correct, beyond this resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, and I do, I do appreciate that, I appreciate the county taking our time and really making sure we do this, if we do it at all, making sure we do it the right way and, and really working through the, the numbers and the modeling for sure. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, thank you.
All righty, why don't the county council turn to page eight now, and we'll call up Ms. Amy Grassi, Real Estate Compliance, Contract of Sale on page eight? There is no page eight. Maybe it's in the...
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the council. I have two contracts, which is first... Bayside, thank you. My first item is a contract of sale for the purchase of a drainage and utility easement and a small temporary construction area at one thirty-seven Bayside Drive for thirteen thousand three hundred eighty dollars. This is the appraised value of the easement. The purpose of the project is to clear up some flooding on Bayside Drive for this community that's been persisting for some time.
Any questions or comments on fiscal matter one for Ms. Grassi? No? Why don't we turn to page eleven, then do fiscal matter two?
Okay. This is a contract of sale for a highway widening at Joppa Road for the construction of sidewalk to reach the crosswalk for the new northeast elementary school. The appraised value was eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. We are paying the property owner thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. This particular property is owned by an elderly woman, so we offered her some assistance in her sidewalk maintenance so that she will be able to shovel for the kids and hire someone to clear ice or whatever, since it is serving the, the crosswalk for the school.
Any questions, comments? All righty, thank you so much, appreciate you coming in.
Would, do you have a resolution on this agenda for me, or do you want me to sit down and come back?
Mr. Boswick, do we have, I don't have anything else for you that I'm aware of?
Okay.
I think that's it.
All right, great.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Grassi.
Thank you.
All right, why don't we turn to page one, call up Kevin Reed, Department of Health and Human Services, Bill sixty-nine dash seventeen? Oh, did he just?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and council members. Bill sixty-nine seventeen is a request for supplemental appropriation of federal funds totaling ninety-two thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed down through the Health Department to our Maryland Children's Health Program. The reason for this supplemental is to bring the actual word in line with our adopted budget. This will bring our FY eighteen adopted budget for the MCHOP program just over two million dollars. And the staff of this program provide eligibility and determination for clients applying for health insurance benefits through Medicaid. And the additional funding will be used to support the salary and benefits of these part-time, thirty-four-hour-per-week eligibility program supervisor, as well as to cover benefits costs of the case creator.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Reed? All right, nice and easy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. And then, our last bill today is page seven, Bill seventy-one dash seventeen, and Councilman Julian Jones.
Yes, this bill is for a indoor shooting range at the, on Red Run Boulevard. Basically, this is a facility that's going to be targeted towards police officers, and they hope to bring in a lot of various police agencies to this area and provide something that the owners of this facility think are very much needed in the police field. And they've had a lot of preliminary discussions with a lot of people. We guess they had a very nice article written by Pam Woods explaining the whole thing. And I look forward to supporting this bill, hope my colleagues can support it as well.
Councilwoman?
Yes, if I could comment, also where the shooting range is going to be, there are several new motels springing up. And because they plan to have training sessions for police departments all over the United States, it will bring business to the area, to these motels. And, and to, what's it called, Juliana's Not the Mall, what's it called? Mill Run.
Oh, Mill Station.
Mill Station, that's it. Anyway, I think it will bring a lot of business to Red Run Boulevard in the area.
Yeah, and it'll be one where less vacant building on the strip, to be quite frank.
Councilwoman?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we, I actually have a indoor gun range and training and, on Route forty-three, Free State. As a matter of fact, they, they, before, I was in there before you quirk, I was the first elected Democrat, they said they were coming in the place, so, and I had a bull's eye, I just want to say that. It was a pretty good shot. But no, they train people from all over the state of Maryland, and people go there just for recreational gun shooting, but they have a lot of training programs as well, and it's been very beneficial to that corridor to have them there. They support a lot of other businesses before and after their training and their visits, so I think it'll be good for your community.
Thank you.
Other, other questions or comments? Is there, is there an arrangement that the Baltimore County Police would, I guess they would have to contract out with this group to...
Yeah, they, they, there's a couple of, the owners are, one is a retired police officer, I guess he was lieutenant, and the other is currently working for the police department today. And they have, we've, we've had some issues with our, I guess our range in the past. We've spent a lot of money refurbishing it, but they've been, they're in the field, and they see the need for, I forget exactly how long the, the one section is, but they'll have several ranges inside, but one will provide some indoor target practice for an extremely long area. I want to think maybe a hundred feet or something. And then there'll also be some training facilities there. So they've done their due diligence, they've went out, they've sought investors, they've talked to a lot of various agencies, and they are, you know, they've expressed interest to the point where they feel comfortable moving forward with a significant investment. It'll be like a high-end gunnery club will be the name of it, it'll be a high-end facility, where, you know, they have the training for people, but if you're like a VIP or something, you can come in there and maybe have a Coke or a sandwich while you're there, so, there you have it.
And so, it wouldn't be a specific, like, police indoor shooting facility, it would be individual people using the facility, some of which could be police? Would they get like a discount or anything, or would...
I'm not sure of the individual people, it'll be open to the public, clearly, they want to do that. Clearly, they want to do that, but they feel that there's a need for police agencies to have a facility to go to where they can have a lecture portion and then go out and actually do some target practicing right on site. So part of this facility will include basically classrooms or lecture halls where people can come in and they can conduct these classes.
Any other questions or comments for Councilman Jones? Everybody good? Well, that was an easy, quick work session?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes. I'd like to recognize a special guest that we have here today. I have a proclamation for her, and it's Dr. Leslie Grant, who's in our audience today. You've seen her at many other work sessions and council sessions. Dr. Grant is a retired dentist, and I think you all remember about ten years ago, maybe more, we had a real tragedy in the state of Maryland with a minority child, I believe in Prince George's County, who ended up dying from, from the lack of dental care. A lot of people don't realize that if you don't have your teeth taken care of, that it can have terrible consequences. And Dr. Grant has been funding, helping to fund a Camp Connect. And this is where she provides dental supplies, toothbrushes, et cetera. The one thing that I, I don't understand, doctor, is in this resolution, it says that you helped fund a trip where they had pizza to eat, then they went to a candy store. And it's supposed to be the, the, what, the nation's oldest candy store or candy manufacturer? So, but you were retired at the time? So no conflict of interest there. But she, seriously, she did provide and does provide toothbrushes, toothpaste, and dental supplies for children who are part of Camp Connect. And again, I can't stress, and I know she's doing this as well, the importance of dental care.
Great.
Absolutely important. And if the members of the council don't mind, if we have, was your picture taken with everybody with the resolution? Okay.
Sure.
Sure.
Camp Connect is a camp for children who are requested here, who are separated from their siblings. And it was a residential camp. It's a way to come here one week every year and provide some opportunity for these children to get that normal way of living. It's a, operated through all family partnerships and it's a wonderful way to help these children. Years back, the kids, we started off by providing not only the funds, but the support of the parents and the students, and a huge challenge, which we were having on camera, and to take pictures with their siblings and not only their parents, but it's a wonderful, wonderful initiative, not just for the services, but for the children. But it's something that we all, we're proud of.
And thank you, thank you so much for what you do. Mr. Chair, okay, to have a picture taken?
Yeah, why don't we adjourn, and then we can meet in the front? All right, thank you all very much for coming in, and have a safe drive home. Thanks.